The May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, Palatine County Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop Meeting. Mr. McClung, if you'd help us with the pleasure of allegiance. Mr. Cox, if you could do the invocation, we'd be grateful.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most graciously, Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day in Palatine. Thank you for the opportunity to come together and work on the county's business. Amen.
Are there any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the presentation? Not hearing any, can have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. County Administrator updates?
No updates tonight, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we're going to open up the public comment period. Come and speak. Three minutes. If you're speaking as an individual, up to five minutes. If you're speaking as a group, I will make you fully aware of there is a public hearing coming on later this evening regarding the tax rate. If you wish to speak at that time, you'll have an opportunity to talk about the tax rate at that. Any other subjects, feel free to come on up and talk to us about now.
David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six Belcrest Circle, Palatine. Is this the appropriate time to talk about budget and not the tax rate? Good. I'd like to make two comments about the May third budget workshop you had. I thought the meeting was excellent. The meeting was serious. It was civil. And most importantly, it was productive. Job well done to everybody up on the stage tonight. The second comment I'd like to make about that meeting is that there was one issue that I feel like was neglected at that particular meeting. Ms. Carmack raised an issue about the salary increases for county employees. And to her credit, she raised the issue twice. And she asked her peers on the board, what were their thoughts about the proposed five percent increase? Because the board had previously publicly stated that they supported a three percent increase. And so I'm not here to advocate for a five percent increase or a three percent increase. But I am here to advocate that I believe that the board owes it to the public to tell us where you stand on whatever increase you decide to enact. But it should not just be something that just happens, that we don't really know where it came from and where our elected officials stand on that particular issue. I look forward to your debate on that issue tonight, and I'm hoping that the third time will be the charm. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, sir.
Barbara Adcock, eighteen sixty-five Rocky Ford Road. First, I would like to thank you for serving the county. I know that your job is not easy. The Palatine County School Board has worked diligently to create a balanced budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. They've listened to both community suggestions and Board of Supervisor suggestions. Deep cuts have already been made, with even some positions being eliminated. The school system will be receiving a smaller amount of funding from the state since Palatine's composite index has changed. This means that the state has deemed the county to have enough money to provide additional funding to schools. As a citizen of the county, as well as a longtime employee of PCPS, I request that you fully fund the budget, which the school system has put forward. Anything less than fully funding the budget would result in additional positions and programs being eliminated. The students of our county are our future and deserve a fully funded education and a highly qualified staff. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Harry Markland, thirty-seven oh-one Hope Meadow Road. I'm a fan of the teachers. I'm not a fan of the administration and the way that it's been run. I think the mismanagement of the administration has taken money that could have been applied for teacher salaries and used it for other purposes. And that's a shame. At a time now when we are all suffering from the economy, to raise the budgets seems ludicrous to me. If you have a water well and you keep dipping into the well and there's, you're getting to the bottom and there's almost no water left, you can't keep going back and taking more water out. We're all suffering, just like all of the county employees are suffering. So the solution to that is not to come to the county taxpayers and say, hey, y'all just need to give us more money. That's all. Because we gotta, we have to give new schools or fire department or police department or teachers raises. We're suffering just like they are. And I would just ask you to consider that as you look at the budget. It's not a situation where you have to fund every single pet program that's in the budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Judy Kane Oliver, forty-three seventy-two through Bridge Road. I'm coming on behalf of the Senior Action Committee, again in support of a senior center. And I just want to remind you that I meet every day people in the community who could benefit from a senior center. They are people like you, like me. They live and own their own homes. Some rent, some are newcomers. Some have long lineages in Palatine. Some you know from church in your neighborhoods or the homeowners association. Most of these persons will not appear on any agency list or numbers. Age does not discriminate. These seniors could benefit from socialization, sharing with others, continued learning opportunities. They could find new meaning in their lives from mentoring or volunteering to serve others. Some of them you haven't even seen around recently. Think about it. Each one of you knows someone in the community that you just don't see anymore. They have become overwhelmed with age-related aging issues, and they simply drop out of the community. And we allow them to drop out because we don't know what to do. But we do know what to do to help them. We have the ability to provide resources to many seniors and in turn, additional services to many other Palatine residents. As a proponent of healthy living, physically and mentally, I see the senior center in Palatine as an asset to our community. A senior center would bring valuable resources to seniors as well as services to many other Palatine residents through intergenerational activities and volunteer efforts. This is about promoting a healthy lifestyle. If you, like me, value health and wellness in Palatine for Palatine residents, you will vote to support funding for our Palatine Senior Center in Palatine. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. Annette Stone, twenty-two thirty-one Lakeview Drive, Lake Shawnee. I'm here also in support of just keeping the budget for a senior center in your mind. Don't put it in the back of your mind. Don't just pat us on the back and be like, that's a good idea. Well, that's nice. Now go away. We're not going away. Because I'm only forty-two, so I'm here for a while. So I feel like I kind of represent the past, present, and future of Palatine because I work a lot with the seniors in Palatine. I myself, middle-aged, I work at the high school and I have a seven-year-old son, and I plan on retiring here. I plan on being here for a long time. The reason why, one of the main reasons why we moved to Palatine County was because of the rural atmosphere. My husband's from Long Beach, California, so he wanted something the opposite of that. We're very fiscally conservative in our beliefs and morals as well as our money. So we are not about throwing money around or wasting money. That's why, like I and my husband have really thought about the senior center as not something that would be fiscally irresponsible or something that's just throwing money away to community members, but actually an investment. The other reason why I moved to Palatine County is because of the schools. My son has autism, and he's been at Flat Rock Elementary School since he was three. And I taught in Chesterfield for ten years, and I said, no way is my kid going to a Chesterfield County school. So, but being here, we found out how wonderful the schools are. I know a lot of people who are moving or who have already moved to Palatine County because of how good our schools are. In the same thought, I don't know if a lot of seniors would go, hmm, let me move to Palatine. They got a lot going on over there for seniors. And in doing research for this and going out and, you know, talking to the public, you know, about coming to our meetings, coming here to speak on support of a senior center, I've heard a lot of them saying, I love Palatine, but I don't know if we necessarily want to stay here and retire here. Not that I want a bunch of people moving to Palatine, but I at least want the people who are here to stay here, and I want them to feel like they matter. When I was driving up here, I saw a sign on Midlothian Turn, not Midlothian, about sixty, and it said on one of the business marquees, don't forget, you matter. And I'm like, that's Palatine. And I want the kids to know they matter. I want people my age to know they matter. I want you to know that you matter. Y'all could come to the senior center. Y'all are of age. And we're not just talking about ninety-nine, one-hundred-and-ten-year-olds. It's older adults, thriving adults. So keep it in your mind. We'll keep bugging you for it. But we also want to know what y'all want to know. So we're going to be inviting you to go to other senior centers, Chesterfield, find out about what we want. So keep it in your mind. We can make it happen.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, Zoom is clear.
Okay. Seeing anyone else will close the public comment period. Next on the agenda, a discussion on the Village Park. Mr. Smith, can you start us off with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Village Park has been a fascinating project to watch as the public support, both corporate and citizen support, has been off the charts. We originally thought this visionary project would not exceed fifty thousand dollars, and our latest estimates are the county costs will be much less than that. I mentioned the public support, not just people support cheering for the project, but support that is investing in the project. I would like to thank the many companies that are helping the county turn this half an acre of ground into something special. Those companies include Watkins Nursery, Luckstone, Yardworks, The Boulder Center, Aqua Virginia, Mr. Bruce LaPierre, Central Virginia Waste Management Authority, Ultimate Cycles, Interior Two Thousand, Sign Design, and the AARP. Also, I'd like to thank our top shelf buildings and grounds team, who've been working actively clearing, seeding, and trail cutting on the project over the past few months. If you've been out there, you've seen the improvement started already, and you can see what's getting ready to take place. A little sales pitch, if you're interested in donating and contributing to Village Park, people have already beat you to the punch, and we'd love to have you join in with us on any contributions you might make to the park. Right now, we're estimating that cost to be roughly twenty-one thousand dollars for, out of the county money, and we have about forty-five thousand dollars budgeted in donations. So it's been a great project to watch. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other conversations on the park?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Since I asked to have this put on. This was approved, the design and funding, in November of twenty twenty-one. So what's happened since then? Because it's invisible, Mr. Smith. You can't see it. Why? It's underway. In fact, I'll ask you to, Bridget, if you could pull up the one picture. Have you seen the movement we had last week with the trail breaking? I saw where you clear cut, yeah. Yeah, so that's step one, and we've had donations. What has happened in the design and funding? There's no place to find it on the county website. Find what? The Village Park. It's not in the CIP, is it? It can't be in the CIP. It missed those schedules, Mr. Cox. Why can't it be in the CIP? It missed the two thousand twenty-two CIP process because we approved it in November, and it missed the twenty-three CIP process because that's going on right now. It happened by your appropriation in the middle of two thousand twenty-one. I'm sorry, I don't understand. We have projects that go on for several years, like Engine Number One or Fire Station Number One, okay, which were funded and has been, is in our CIP, and is there for a number of years, and has started last year. So why do we decide to make this special and take it out? We're treating it very differently. We're excited about it, Miss Cox. It's a great project. Who's managing it? We're Public Works managing it. Is that what you told that we have no supervisors managing it? There's no mini-committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Wait, please, please, please.
I was just going to help with that answer.
Okay, no, I want Mr. Smith to answer because. We have had great support from the community, and I have to. I'm not talking about the community. Excuse me, do you want me to answer the question? Okay. You've had great support from the community. Part of that support has become, some of the board members have done a great job of generating that community support, and it's been, and it's taken off. It's on fire. People want to participate. And so, yes, if you want to call that a committee, there's no formal board action that is called a committee, you could call it a subcommittee if you'd like. My understanding, you told Mrs. Carlton last meeting, okay, that it was being run by a mini-committee that consisted of Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Byerly. I think it's a good term. Okay. I mean, they're working hard. They're working very hard on it. So who made that decision in my district that they would be doing that? You did as a Board of Supervisor when you voted to have it project appropriated back in November of two thousand twenty-one. I know. Who made the decision that it was going to be managed? And why aren't we, our staff is not managing. They're being told what to do. I'd beg to differ. Okay, well, it won't be the first time tonight. Carmack, you wanted to say something. Are you finished, Mr. Cox? Yeah, I was turning to. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I'll pipe in a little bit. We've worked very closely with Public Works. I think candidly, I took a very, myself and probably Mr. Byerly, but I'll speak for myself right now, a very special interest in this park because I know it created a lot of controversy. Some board members were really upset with it. So I really wanted this to be perfect, to be totally honest with you. And I wanted it to make sure we were not over budget. We came far under budget, and it was something that the county could be really proud of. Basically, the quote-unquote committee, I go, Mr. Byerly certainly has as well gotten donations. We at that point give that contact to Mark Piper, and he coordinates. That's all that's happened. We have a list of, which was up there, of items that are needed for the park. I went down, made phone calls. Mr. Byerly's made phone calls, asked if they wanted to support this endeavor. And as Mr. Smith said, it's actually been surprisingly very, very successful, and people are excited about it. I, you know, as far as it not being on the county website, I mean, we just had our pickleball courts updated. That wasn't on the county website. If you would like, I mean, I can certainly put something, a design layout on Facebook and, you know, promote it wherever we want. It's certainly not something that's meant to be hidden. This is something that we're really excited about. This is a good project. It's not going to be a major project to the taxpayers in any way, shape, or form. So it's, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask me. This isn't something that we're trying to hide, couch, you know, I'm trying to boss people around. Mr. Byerly's trying to boss people around. It's kind of a community effort. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
My understanding that there's been a substantial change in the conceptual plan. Who made that decision, and how are the designs being approved? And are there any minutes of those meetings?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
It's what I told Public Works, Chris Chutz with Balzer and Associates, Mr. Byerly, we should incorporate some of the concerns that the board members had that were opposed to the park. You know, I know, Mr. Cox, you had relayed the fact that it was uninteresting, it was boring, and nothing remotely appealing about it.
Yes, ma'am.
So when Balzer, you know, the Timmons study, as you know, that was kind of a conceptual plan. Then there was some concern with using Timmons, so we then looked to Balzer. And he came up with a more of a actual hardcore schematic, and he added a water feature to it. So when you're boiling your brains out, you can go sit next to the water feature. So yes, there has been a little bit of a design change. It's still going to have native plant species. It's still going to have pollinators. It's still going to have the pavilion that we talked about. It's still going to have the walking path. The main design change, I would say, is the added water feature. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
This was, project has been in kind of no path, regular path, since it was approved. Mr. McClung, when you made the motion to approve it, you made a very, very specific motion that it would conform with the conceptual plan that was attached. And now we have some significant changes. Mr. Lackney, do the changes in the conceptual plan comport with what we approved, or have we gotten away from what we approved, and do we need to revisit it?
Mr. McClung's motion, I did a good look at the minutes since this was on the agenda. Mr. McClung's motion, which I brought with me, was to replicate the Timmons plan, and that's what was approved by a vote of three to two. So the Timmons plan is what was approved. And deviations from that plan, I think, require another board vote to adopt the deviations and the modifications because replicate is a pretty specific word.
Even as a conceptual plan?
Well, the problem is the motion was to replicate the Timmons plan, so technically that thing, duplicate this, make it look like this. And so if there have been deviations, I think you need to, the board, since the board adopted the motion, I think you need to update if you want to go with a different plan.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Ms. Carmack, I'm not trying or interested in having another board fight over this, okay? But I am interested in bringing this out into the daylight because I don't think it is. And I have constituents who don't believe it is, okay? And so that's my interest, is finding a way. I mean, it's been approved. I'm not, I'm not, that's not where I'm going. But I do want to see this thing out in the daylight. I do want to see it back closer to the normal processes we use. And that's all I'm looking for, not to try and shut it down, not to have a area of differences of what we're going to do with that land on the board. That's not where I'm going at all. But I want some daylight on it. I want more daylight than that. And so anything that will accomplish that, I'm interested in. And if we can find a way to do that without and satisfy the concerns that Mr. Lackney has, I'm happy to do that. That's really what I want, is more daylight. I want it easier for citizens to understand what's going on and what the process is because we've taken it out of the normal process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. McClung. Hold on, Mr. McClung, go ahead.
So.
It wasn't a tie.
Okay, almost, anyway. So any deviation from the Timmons plan, we'd have to do another motion to deviate from the plan? It would just be a motion to, you said the new plan was Balzer, a motion to allow the modification to incorporate the design changes in the Balzer plan?
Mr. Chairman. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Are you finished, Mr. McClung?
I might make a motion, but I'm waiting to a candidate.
Okay. Ms. Carmack?
I was just going to ask, if nobody likes the water feature, if, you know, you want to go back to the plan with the Timmons, with the apiaries, and the one that, y'all, that's fine. I mean, it's fine. Really, it's okay. You know, we can take out the the boulders, the water feature, and do the the other plan. It's really, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I'm the one that said it was a crappy plan.
We all know.
Yeah, I just reminded everybody. We know. And I don't have any problem with having changes, but I would simply like to have some daylight on that so we all understand what's going on. And a citizen who walks by that every day, can't find anything anyplace, no information, has to run down to the county administrator to find out what's going on, doesn't have to do that. That's all. I think we need improvements over the original design. So once again, I'm not trying to make this difficult, but I want more daylight on it. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I want to think, this is suggested aboard positively, any motion that you make tonight, if you leave a flexibility that his staff wants to move a stone someplace, one place to another, that if it's not exactly like the Balzer plan, that we're.
If I want to cough, I don't need to get permission.
Some flexibility.
You could use the term substantial conformity. You could say, if Mr. McClung's planning on making a motion, the motion could be, I'm not telling you what to say, but the motion could be, hereby move that we modify the original adoption and allow the Balzer plan or substantial compliance with the Balzer plan. To that effect, that substantial compliance means if you completely eliminate something, that might not be substantial compliance. But if you move something six inches or out of boulder or out of tree, or I would say that's still substantial compliance. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
From what Glassy said, if it is any major, if there's any major deviation from the Timmons plan to the Village Park, we will need approval from the board. If there's any major deviation.
Substantial deviation.
So the motion would be, and after I repeated, if it's what you meant to say, you can just say, that's it.
No.
Yes. The motion would be that will allow a deviation from the original Timmons plan to substantial compliance with the new Balzer plan. That's it.
Okay.
So moved. So moved, yes.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
Can we have a description?
We will now, that we have a second, absolutely. The floor is open.
I feel like the conversation has gone around me because I'm sitting here talking about something I haven't seen. We're talking about conceptual plans have changed, and we're talking about a water feature. I don't know what the water feature looks like, so I really can't comment. I would like to be, you know, briefed on, you know, updates, you know, the enhancements to the park, you know, if it's an enhancement, you know. Can't see any reason why we can't, you know, bring it to the meeting and say, hey, look, this is an idea that was recently presented. I think it's a good idea. Yeah, let's go follow with it, you know. I like, you know, I guess, Mr. Cox, not quite sure why we don't just add this, you know, to the capital improvement plan or had it added when it was presented to us. You know, and that's a good way to track projects in the county. And we can show, you know, as we go along, where we've got contributions, you know, from the community, and we can actually show what's going on. So I'm going to agree with him on that. I don't have any problems with modifying the park for enhancements. As you know, my concern was always the ambiance of the park and that it fit, that it had to be a good fit with what we've already got there now. That was my concern. I congratulate Mrs. Carmack on what I thought was a great idea with the Christmas tree. What I didn't particularly like and had problems with was the beehives, the pollinator plants. It was that. It was the theme of the park. But that's it. I'm not going back and revisiting that. The decision has been made. We're going to have the park. So if we can have things that, if Ms. Carmack says, that address, you know, generally concerns that were brought out by Mr. Cox. concerns that were brought out by Mr. Cox and by myself, to help mitigate those concerns, I don't have any problem with that, no. I'd just like to know what we're talking about tonight, and be able to see it. You know, when we say a water feature, you know, I don't know what, you know, I don't know whether it's a, I don't know, I can sit here and guess, but I don't know. You know, I don't have anything in front of me, you know, that shows the location, shows me the type of water feature, or we're gonna have ducks, I mean, I don't, you know.
It's a yard faucet, you just lift the handle, the water comes out.
Yeah, something like that, you know, pump head, you know.
What color? There's a color, we're gonna have to vote on the color now.
I want to say, you know, how big is it?
I got it.
You know, I don't know.
Here's what, not to interrupt you, Mr. Williams, but I think, one thing that I certainly agree with Mr. Cox on is, in probably multiple ways, if we could have something on our website, I think that's important. I do think that there's many projects that go on in this county, they're not on that website. Ms. Carl, you're not walking by them every day, but this one you are, so I can understand, you know, you want to know what's going on, you've lived in this county a long time, your concern, and your wishes are for this to be a great county. That's the wishes of everybody on this board, too. But I, I think that if we can find a way to, that wonderful word, transparent, put it out on the website, let people see what's happening, what the stages are, what's going on, I think that, that would be a huge improvement in a lot of subjects or projects that we're working on.
Mr. Chairman.
You can't get too much information in regards to that. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I agree with your comments, but I want to go back to what I just said. Can somebody tell me what the water feature is, what it looks like, where it's going to go? I mean, do we have a picture or something that shows me the location in the proposed park, and what this water feature actually is?
Can we?
I don't think, I don't think we have that tonight, I mean, I don't think there's something here tonight to show you.
I just don't like voting not having seen it, okay? I'm fine with the idea, Ms. Carmack, of going forward, but I'm a little bit tepid, if you want to use that word, about going forward when I haven't even seen it. I don't think it's going to be anything odorous, but I don't, you know, I want to make sure, because of my original concern, of having something that was done that fits, you know, well into the park, I mean, into the, into the village.
Could defer till Monday?
No.
And just then.
I don't see any reason to defer, personally, you're more than welcome to abstain if you don't want to vote, we, we have.
Would you like to see what it looks like?
I don't have a.
Would you like, I do.
I don't have a picture of it.
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Put it up there.
Okay.
Yeah, put it up there.
Bridget, would you go to the file called Village Park? And under that, number seven? This is the current, as I understand it, Ms. Carmack, you'll be able to tell me that this is the current. So, we can see it, so Mr. Williams can see it, you can.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Can you find it? There we go.
I hope you got a better picture of the water feature than that.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Can I?
I love it.
Can I interject real quick?
I can't see it.
It's not on this.
On my glasses?
Yes.
It was added, where the arbor is, that's out, and a water feature's there.
The water feature's owned there?
Yeah, but it's been moved.
Okay.
It's been moved, because the layout, the topography of the land, where it was shown there, wasn't suitable, so it's, it worked better moving it up.
It is, maybe it would help, Mr. Williams, if you told him what it was, because it's described.
It's called a pondless waterfall.
Pondless waterfall, now you've really got.
Yes, pondless waterfall. I mean, I don't know if you can Google a pondless waterfall quickly and pull it up? I have, I have email, you know, pictures, but I don't have, you know, that's not gonna happen right now.
Is this like something they had in Monroe Park, you know?
I'm trying to think of where they have.
Is it like a water fountain coming into a pool of water?
No, it's almost like a little rocky area. It's like a natural water fountain.
Water going across stones.
Water going across stones, yep.
Levels of stones.
And it's constantly recycled.
Correct.
Now, how does the water get replenished?
It's a pump.
The pump kicks in?
Kind of like that. It's not going to look exactly like that, but that's a pondless waterfall.
That's a pondless waterfall.
Yeah, because I didn't know whether we were gonna have something, like I said, you know, where you see people at graduation in the pool, or climbing up the, you know, the statues in the middle of the pool, you know? So, this would be like a, a water feature analogous to a creek. Is that, is that?
Short creek.
Exactly.
A short creek.
Exactly.
Very short.
And it was put behind the Christmas tree to be sort of a focal point.
Like I said, you're looking at the wrong person, if you're asking me to opine on how to do parks, I mean, you can come on my house, you know, I don't know anything about decorating, much less doing parks, I'll go with the majority, whatever I want.
Good, we have a motion, we have a second. Want to do a roll call, Mr. Cox?
I don't see a need for one.
I don't either, but I wanted to check with you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings, we'll now have a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 tax rate. We'll open the floor up for that, anybody would like to come and speak in regards to
Appreciate the opportunity to come speak for you this evening. You know, when the county voted on 79 cent tax rate, the goal was to keep that for the foreseeable future. However, there was no way anyone would have seen 6.5% core inflation, gasoline prices doubling, diesel prices more than doubling, food prices increasing at an astounding rate, while food inventories are reduced, assessed values of homes increasing by over 6%. And as a result, we're having to all significantly tighten our belts just to get to the end of the month. We're driving less, going out to dinner less, we're buying less, but we're paying significantly more, and it's, it's painful. So, I just ask you to take all this into consideration when making a decision on our real estate, on our real estate tax rate and the county budget, quite frankly. In your last budget from last year, there was approximately 25 new positions proposed, 12 were approved, this year they're asking for nine more positions, as well as a number of projects that I just don't think are essential projects. And so, I just wanted to speak tonight, just to share the message that I believe the budget has been sending, and just to let you know, I'm aware the budget's been changed. So, I actually wrote this, and said a lot of this a couple of weeks ago, but I know it will have to change. But I, I believe the message that's being sent to the people of Powhatan is, hey, guys, I know it's challenging the economic environment, but we're still planning to raise your taxes, because we want to add some more employees, we want to buy some land and develop it, and we want to, we want to keep our 10-year plan intact. It might not be the right exact message, but for me, the message your budget's sending is not the right message for Powhatan, based on the current economic conditions. You know, it sure would be nice to see the Powhatan County budget reflect a similar tightening of your belt, just as we're tightening our belts. In a recent Board of Supervisors meeting, one of the supervisors said, you know, we were supposed to be the dream team. It made me wonder, what would my dream team government look like? And it simply stated, it would be a government that exercises fiscal responsibility and budgetary restraints at every level, in every budget, every year. And in environmental, excuse me, and in economically challenging times, it would not include 34 new positions over a two-year period, it would not include unnecessary real estate tax increases, it would not include a fund for the county to buy and develop land on Route 60, and it would not include multiple items that are not necessary for the basic operation of the county during challenging economic times. So, I'm just asking you, when you look at things, especially when you look at the 10-year plan, is to realize that, that times have changed, the economy has changed, it's changed to such an extent, that I would hope we could change the budget and the 10-year plan to help out the citizens of Powhatan. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smither?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman.
We'll close the public comment period. Board comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
I'd like to get the ball rolling, and.
Not to interrupt you, you sound like Mr. Williams last night, but I appreciate you getting the ball rolling.
I learned it from last night.
Get the ball rolling.
Learned something, I learned something last night, I appreciate it. I'm gonna get the ball rolling tonight.
Okay.
And I'm making a motion that we adopt Resolution R-202-10A, which will lower the tax rate from 79 cents to 77 cents. And I would also like to add something to that, if that's legal. Mr. Delakney? I would like to discontinue the Revenue Stabilization Fund and put it back in the general fund.
I would suggest that as a separate motion, and deal with the resolution first, and then, okay, make a separate motion on that, I think that'll be cleaner.
Can I do two motions in a row?
No, no, you do the first one, give a second, it'll be, they're not technically directly related, so.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'm new to this, so.
I will second the motion on the 77 cents.
Discussion.
Discussion.
That's it.
Second, and then discussion.
Yeah, I'm opening the floor up now for discussion.
Great. Could I have the file which says, a budget primary, it's a PowerPoint? The folder is Budget Primer. No, you have Budget Primer, it's a PowerPoint. Put it on slideshow? There we go. Way of introduction, this is, the reason for this, is we started talking about the budget, I heard a couple of comments which concerned me, because they weren't correct. One was that, wow, if we reduce our tax rate, then we can't fund some other things that are very important, like the schools, like raises for employees. So, that's not correct, and we'll look at it in just a second. The other one kind of indicated how fragile the financial situation is in Powhatan County, and how we have to be so careful, and so, I want to go right at that also. So, could we go to the next? Okay, this is gonna be real simple. Two basic components, the operating budget and the capital improvement program. I'm gonna talk about the operating budget, I'll talk about capital improvement program later on. Could we go to the next? 79 cents tax rate, now these, these numbers come from your budget, if you're looking for them, they're in the model that's in this packet. And so, what you have is for 2022, total revenues of 91 million, expenditures of 85,800, and a surplus of $5,573,000. Okay, so, total revenues, total expenditures, there's $5,573,000 left over. In 2023, we have total revenues of 95 million projected, and total expenditures of 91 million six, and that produces a surplus of $4,149,000. I won't drill down on this, could we go to the next page? Let's look, I'll look at this number a little bit more. Total expenditures of 91 million, that's what we're forecasting in the budget for 2023, you will notice immediately, that's almost $6 million more than 2022. It's a big number. And still, we produce a surplus of $4,150,000. So, let's take a look at what's in that 91 million, could we go to the next page? That 91,673,000 includes spending increases for the schools of $2,001,000, all county employees with 5% raise, benefits associated with that raise. On the county side, we are eating the entire insurance increase of 19%, we're not passing any of it on to our employees, $400,000 of compression, VRS increase of $198,000. Total increases included in that 91 million are $3,939,000. Lot of money. Do we have the next slide, please? So, there's an increase in the school's budget for $2,117,000, increase for county employees of $1,008,000, for a total of three, almost $4 million bucks, and relief for the citizens of Powhatan is zero. The question I've asked before is, where's the balance? And there needs to be some balance, so could we go to the next one? This gets, Mr. McClung's motion is 77 cents. As you, a penny is worth roughly $433,000. The June tax payment will come out, it will be in the, for the 20-year, 2022 budget. The November payment will be for 2023, and you see, the subtraction is for the surplus, not for the operating at all. So, the total expenditures stay the same, the 91 million stays there, all of those things are funded, but we have a hit on surplus. Now, you don't get to do that for free. That surplus is in large part going to fund our CIP, so that is a reduction in money going to the CIP, and it replic, that reduction replicates itself over 10 years. So, it continues, so it's, it's expensive. We'll go to the next. The point is, cutting real estate tax rate would reduce dollars going to surplus, no impact on expenditures. So, two points I wanted to make. One, we can have 77 cents, and we can still do all of the things that are in that budget. And two, Powhatan County is not in a fragile financial situation at all. There will always be limitations on what we can do and what we can't do, as they should be. If you give government money, it will spend it, okay? It's just real simple. So, I'm delighted with Mr. McClung's motion, but I wanted to get those two points out there in a better understanding, in a very simple way, of what's going on with the budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Mr. Cox. Not hearing anyone else. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Smither?
Mr. Williams?
All right.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Mr. Bow.
Yes, Mr. McClung.
I now have a second motion.
Okay.
I'd like to discontinue the Revenue Stabilization Fund and put it back in the general fund.
Okay, so the motion is, you want to discontinue the Revenue Stabilization Fund and put those funds from that back into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Oh, Ms. Byerly, I have a question, for council. This is a public hearing for the tax rate, how far, okay, that, that's the budget, how far can we drift?
Well, the, technically, we've finished the public hearing.
Right.
So, we're, we're actually on to other agenda items. I would say it is, I mean, the board could say it's not on the agenda, we don't want to hear it, but I think it's tangentially relevant to tax rates and budget, which is the next item. And because it is tangentially relevant, I think it's an appropriate motion, unless there wants to be a challenge. And because it is tangentially relevant, I think it's an appropriate motion unless there wants to be a challenge, that it's not.
I guess I would rather see it in the budget discussion, which is where it is, not in the tax rate discussion, I have no problems, okay, but it's part of the budget. Not part of the tax rate, that's, that's my reason I ask for clarification. I, I will be, I'm happy to support whatever the.
Yep, I, I got what you're saying. The motion's on the floor. There was a second.
A second.
Mr. McClung goes have the option if he wants to table it.
Yeah, to, to move it to the budget.
Yeah, just be a, to table it, to the budget, which is the motion, right, motion's out there, it just tables it.
You can tailor it to the budget discussion, right?
So technically, after the budget discussion, Mr. McClung's motion will go first, and then adoption of the budget will go second. Unless he wants to move his motion to after the adoption of the budget.
Okay, so the tax rate's settled.
Yes.
Next, we're gonna go to the public, post-public hearing actions on adopting the budget for fiscal year 2023. Is there any comments on the budget?
Mr. Chairman, as a lead in, we can ignore discussion on partial, the part that says two thousand twenty two dash thirteen B, because that's the seventy nine cent discussion. So we're only talking about A, which is a seventy seven cent discussion.
B is out of the, out of the picture. On A, based on seventy seven cents. I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we eliminate the licensed vehicle tax or not tax fee. Right, Mr. Timberlake? Licensed vehicle fee. And from the personal property tax bills that go out, so my motion is to eliminate the licensed vehicle fee of thirty five dollars per vehicle, motorcycle, trailer, car, et cetera.
A second.
Comments, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I do. Bridget, would you go to the file that says 2023 Personal Property Tax? Now, you can't read that, and that's, that's fine. Way of explanation. This is personal property, okay? And what's going on with it, and it has a direct correlation with the budget, excuse me, with the motion that Mr. Barley has made, okay? And so it's another way of looking at a problem we have building for us. This is in our budget book, and it shows you personal property taxes of ten million three eighty from, for, that's what we expect in 2022, and eleven million in 2023. Could we go to the next page? Personal property is a problem. It is a major problem, and we need to be looking at a real solution. All right, let's define a problem. First of all, we need to convert our budget to a calendar year, because we collect taxes and manage taxes on a calendar year, and our budget's on a fiscal year. So our budget for 2022 for personal properties was ten million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Half of that is five million one ninety. That is what we expect in our June twenty two, 2022 tax payment. The FY twenty three budget's eleven million oh eighty seven, half of that's five million five. That's what we expect in our November twenty twenty two payment. So that says, that says, I should say, twenty twenty two calendar year, I'm sorry, is ten million seven thirty three seventy seven six. That's what we're expecting based on the budget for personal property in calendar year 2022. Could we scroll down a little bit? Jamie says we're gonna bill sixteen million two hundred and ninety nine thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars. That's what we're gonna bill. Now, we won't collect all of that, we never do, but that's what we're gonna bill, so the difference is five million five hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. That's the tax bill, increase in tax bill which is about to hit citizens of Powhatan County, and the cause is inflated vehicle valuations. Let's go to the next page. And we're gonna quantify the problem. And to quantify the problem, we're gonna use, that we're still on. Mr. Cox, I guess we ought to correct a few things before you move on, because you might need those as a basis for your next page. If, Bridget, if you could bring back Mr. Cox, excuse me, I'm sorry. Are you, are you okay with that, or you want to come back to it later? No, we're not going anywhere, we're right here. Okay. Let me finish. Oh, I'm sorry, I was just asking, did you want me to inject it now later? Okay. Number three. We're gonna bring you into this discussion, Mr. Smith. All right, quantify the problem. Mr. Timberlake, January twenty fifth of this year said, we have a problem coming down the pike. It's rapidly inflated values for cars. It went to all of us. All of us ignored it. So we should have known in January twenty five that we had a problem. Now, this is the example that Mr. Timberlake used out of a lengthy email. He got a 2018 truck at a three sixty rate, one thousand seven hundred and ninety two dollars is a tax. This said, at that point in time, that truck would have a twenty five percent increase in value that is probably low as we look at it today, that was in January, it's gotten much worse. And so the tax bill would be two thousand two hundred and forty one dollars, a difference of four hundred and forty eight dollars. That's what the difference would be on that car. Now, eliminating the license fee as a solution, that person would get thirty five dollars. Not much of a solution. So not only did Jamie describe the problem, he went on and offered a solution. So it's the same truck again, twenty five percent increase is sixty two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. But if you don't collect at the hundred percent rate, in this example, he collected at an eighty percent of the valuation, then the tax on a car due to inflation goes away. So the, so not only did Mr. Timberlake surface the problem, but he also offered an interesting solution. Now, could we go to the next one, please, ma'am? It'll say CA Budget Update. On Friday, Mr. Smith brought forward some information. Can we blow it up where those dots are? Mr. Smith said that the increase in personal property tax estimate base that he had was two million nine hundred thousand. Now, you remember, I told you it was something much closer to five million bucks. So he has, he has a lower estimate, what's most important, though, is the asterisk next to it and the footnote. So if we could go to the next one, which is says, it's labeled PP Tax County Administrator. This is Mr. Smith's suggestion for what we do. Blow it up, there we go. This, this says, our original estimate was made before we were able to really see the impact of rising vehicle prices, and we were too conservative. That's true. Though we had the warning from Jamie in January because of the Keystone conversion, Mr. Timberlake was not able to tell us the value of the personal property book until last week. Normally, he would have been able to do that in January. So we didn't know, we didn't know the total number. But Mr. Smith goes on and says, we are suggesting that the changes in the personal property tax rate or procedures be reviewed this summer with implementation of any changes in calendar year 2023, at which point we will have a better understanding of future valuations and stabilization of the vehicle values. What that says is, okay, citizens of Powhatan, you're gonna pay all year long. Every other jurisdiction is doing something about this. And this says, no, we'll wait. First of all, we know what the problem is. We've got it quantified. We've got a solution. And there's absolutely no reason to wait. Could we go to the next page, please? It's number six. This is personal property tax, okay? This is the act now solution. This is not to wait till some, some other time, okay? The problem is we have a rapid increase in evaluation of vehicles. That's the problem. So let's address the problem. The solution is to tax the vehicles at less than one hundred percent of the valuation for FY twenty three. We need a target amount for revenue deduction. Mr. Smith has two million nine, I've got five million, Jamie's got a number, we, we need to come up with a number that makes some sense. Mine is a back-of-the-envelope number. Okay, it should not be taken to the bank. But I really do believe the bubble that we're talking about is between four and five million bucks, which is about to be handed as the citizens of Powhatan. We need a valuation percentage that lines up with that target, in other words, it reduces it rather than handing it to the citizens of Powhatan, and we need to do it on the June 2022 Personal Property Tax Bill. We can't wait. There's no reason to wait. The elimination of the license tax doesn't do anything. All it does is hurt in terms of dealing with this problem, all it does is hurt our CIP. This doesn't hurt our CIP, because this is money we never planned to collect. Now, we can, we can, we can ignore it and stuff it in the bank, okay, and pretend that the citizens of Powhatan are not hurting, but that's not reality. So I have a totally different approach than a license fee removal, because that doesn't address the problem, it's too small an answer. And this is major. If you don't think, if you don't know how major it is, I want you to go talk to some of our jurisdictions around the county, when Enrico put out their bill in April, the phone lines lit up. They went crazy. And of course, Mr. Patokas responded. Now, because their bill was out there, their only possibility was to have a rebate. Our bill is not out there. We can fix the problem before it exists. Once again, we know enough about the problem to deal with it. We have the time to deal with it. And we shouldn't soak citizens of Powhatan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I attended an executive committee meeting of the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization not that many days ago. The meeting immediately went to Ms. Pat Abannon, long-serving supervisor in Henraco County, where she said her phone had been ringing off the hook. And Pat gives out her home phone number. But anyway, she went on at length about how they were being inundated with phone calls, her and the other supervisors like Mr. Thornton. So they called an emergency meeting to address the situation, as Mr. Cox said, they'd already sent out their bills, we, we haven't, so this is a little bit different situation. Rebates were really the only option to them. But they had the special meeting, and if you watched the news conference, which I did, John Patokas, who's the county manager, he had the finance director there, other staff, and, and so he described the problem, he said, you know, we've been through a lot of stuff over the years, and we went through the downturn in the real estate market, we went through the 2010 where we didn't know whether the world was gonna quit spending. But he said, we had never seen anything like this where you had a bubble in the real estate, excuse me, in the personal property with the vehicles. He said, there was no way of anticipating this because we had never seen anything like this before. So in response to the citizens in, in Henraco County, staff came together, burned the midnight oil, and they decided the best way that they could do it was to be able to, you know, reduce their personal property rate from, it was three sixty, in Powhatan, theirs is three fifty. They reduced it fifty two pennies, and they extended the due date that they had originally, and they extended that into August. You know, due date, meaning they kept the date that it was due, but they said, we're not gonna penalize you, okay, if you pay it by this date in August. So they did two things. They gave some relief on when they could pay with a penalty extending that period of time. And then they came forward with a way where they could give back the money to the citizens, because when I talked to the folks over there, talked to Mr. Hinton, who used to be Nez's boss, he's, I said, Brandon, how do y'all define surplus? He said, anything over and above what we budgeted for, we're giving back. So they chose to give back the money that was a result of a anomalous situation that they've never seen before, that this region, this state, none of us have ever seen before. Went on to say that other localities are addressing in different ways. I think Chesterfield is, you know, going at it with using the tax relief, you know, from the old Gilmore Act that we still get, I think they're, they're doing it that way. But every locality is addressing it, albeit they're doing it in different ways. The situation we find ourselves in is like Mr. Cox said, we haven't sent the bills out. There's no reason why we can't do something analogous to, Mr. Timberlake brought to our attention back in January, where we can actually mitigate the problem before it goes out into the community and we create this storm. Because, again, thirty five dollars is not gonna touch the hundreds of dollars more that people are gonna have to pay on their vehicle tax. Thirty five dollars is not gonna get you there. So again, problem solving starts with problem identification. We know what the problem is. We have the means to mitigate it with the assessed value, and then we have the collection rate that we want to choose, and whatever that rate turns out to be that mitigates the bubble, we can use, and we can send the bills out. Now, I've been asking, and I might want to have the treasurer come down, so I won't be calling her down and yo-yoing her back up and down the aisle. I've got Charlotte here, so Charlotte's accessible, and I'd also like to ask Miss Timberlake to come down. Because what I'm gonna be proposing, I have talked to the three of them about this. And what I would like to suggest is that we go after the bubble that we have in personal property. We give back that money to you in the form of a ratio that we come up with. We give back that money to you in the form of a ratio that we come up with that addresses the bubble, where you won't get sticker shock for a personal property bill where your vehicle is going to be costing you hundreds of dollars more. Mr. Timberlake, being as this was your suggestion back to us in January, and I'm giving him full credit, because I got the same email everybody else got, and I didn't do anything with it. And lo and behold, what happens? It came, it came to fruition. So, sometimes it helps being connected with a bunch of commissioners of revenue around the state, doesn't it?
I mean, the other part of that is, we saw a little one last year, and, and we track that stuff all the time. I mean, it's not just a once-a-year thing that we sit and do. So, when we've had discussions with J.D. Power, which is who owns NADA now, everybody still calls it NADA, but it's owned by a larger company now. They give us economic projections and, and things that are in, they're the experts, not necessarily us, but we have to rely on them. And when we got that stuff, the 25%, I thought was a pretty high number trying to attract some attention. And then, when we came in closer to 40%, I'm sorry, I missed it. But yeah, so, I mean, I mean, it is what it is, but...
Yeah, it's, it's 40, 40% now.
Yes, sir. The only thing I wanted to, that I heard earlier in part of the talk, and I think Mr. Smith might have to be able to interject on that, is remember that my $16 million includes PPTRA, which is 3.022 million we get from the state. That's in a different place in their budget. And from an assessment standpoint, that's all one pocket of money. So, remember, when, when we're going through this process and we start talking about these numbers and we're figuring out a percentage, the, the 16 million includes 3.022 of PPTRA. So, if it's apples to apples, you're actually talking about probably 13-point-something million, not 16. Just make sure we're on the same page there.
Okay.
And, and that's law. Mine has to be in the assessment, because that's where it is. Theirs has to be in a budget process.
Okay. One of the things that we're up against right now, and you've heard me talk about this before, is with the new system we're implementing. And being able to address the concerns that I know you two guys have as their constitutional officer, you as the commissioner of revenue, you as the treasurer, y'all have two primary responsibilities. You want to make sure whatever you do is, one, legal.
Yes.
And, two, that is correct.
Yes.
Last thing, any of us want is any more problems with this budget process where the bills go out incorrect. So, what I'm going to be doing now is asking Ms. Nunley, from your standpoint though, Mr. Commissioner, do you have any problem in terms of when the actual collection date occurs? You know, in terms of whether or not it has to occur before June 30th or after, or if you went days over into the next fiscal year? Is that a problem for you?
Not for the commissioner's office.
Okay. Ms. Nunley? If you would, please explain to the people what you explained to me today and have been explaining to me about how the process works with you being able to work with Keystone and get the bills out and work with the printer at the same time. What are you up against?
So, my new process with Keystone, once Jamie provides me the book, which cannot be done until after the rates are set and all of the adjustments are confirmed, they need three to five days to produce a book for me in order to generate bills. Once they do that, I must then go and confirm that all of the changes are made, the bills look correct. I have to do a proof of the entire book. We usually just do a sampling. Given that it's a new system, we have not done, this is our first billing on the new system, I would prefer as much time as possible to go through and, and check as many records as possible. After that time, we can produce a file to send to the printer, and the printer then needs three to four days to produce the bill, which after they produce it, they also send me samples. I have to approve those proofs, and then it takes three to four days for them to print stuff and mail the bills.
Okay. And your conversations, I believe today with Keystone, with the programming, additional programming that they would have to do to accomplish what Mr. Timberlake has put forward to us, to adjust that bubble and those bills that would be going out, what, what does that do to the process?
That's going to put us back at square one. We had played with some of the personal property records to try and work out any kinks ahead of time, and that would put us back at square one. He would have to read, reread the entire book at the, with the drop, the reduced rate, and then they would start from scratch from that point. So, that would be, once that's accomplished, then it would be another three to five days for them, on top of another three to four days for the printer. And that's for each billing set. So, real estate is sep, you cannot do real estate and personal property at the same time, so it would require two separate...
Right. But if we wanted to go a, go ahead and go forward with the real estate, we can.
Yes.
They're two separate buildings.
Absolutely.
We like to usually do it in some type of...
Yes, I can start, I can start real estate in the morning.
Right. So, real estate could go ahead and go out, but the problem would be in the additional programming that Keystone would have to do to get you ready to go to the printer to send out the bills. And you found out today, I believe, that it didn't feel like, you know, with this sequencing of time, that you would be able to have the collection date accomplished by June 30th. Is that correct?
Correct. If, if we change the assessment ratio, then we, it would be difficult to meet a June, a June 30th.
Okay, so, our best guess would be first or second week in July. Okay. So, that led to the next question. Okay. What does that do to you? Does that cause you any problems, says the constitutional officer, the treasurer?
No, my office, I can accommodate whatever is necessary. I can bill when is necessary and have a due date whenever is adopted.
Okay. Charlotte, would you come up, please? So, Charlotte's the third piece in this process. She's, she's our finance director. So, I asked Charlotte, "What is the problem with us having a collection, say, after June 30th, you know, the first or second week in July?" And Charlotte, this is your turn now.
Okay. My only concern is our, half of our budget is based on, well, not half. If the real estate, I guess, due date stays the same, that's a big chunk of our revenue. But budgetarily, we did budget for personal property to be collected at June 5th. I don't know if there's any rules against chain, going beyond June 30. I can't say in 25 years of auditing and doing it, I've never seen anyone extend their due date past the end of the fiscal year. I do worry that if all the real estate comes in the way it is, we may not have a cash flow issue, but that does put us in a situation where we're not meeting our budget, we're not meeting our cash flow, possibly. So, I have no crystal ball, so I do not know how that will impact us, but that's, that is some of my concerns.
Okay. When I met with our auditors, who is it, Brown Edwards? This was several years ago. One of the things that the partner that I met with told me, he said, "You know, I'll tell you a little trick." He says, "You know, your fund balance, whatever that amount is," he said, "you look at your average expenditures through the year, come up with a monthly amount, and you divide that into your fund balance, and it tells you how many months you can go, you know, on not getting any revenue in." All right? So, I would think that we, with the fund balance that we have, we, that shouldn't be a problem that we're going to run out of money, okay? The second thing I did was, as you know, I'm, I'm always interested in understanding for myself. So, I called Megan, the auditor up in Roanoke, and I asked her, I said, "Is there a problem? Is there an accounting law that you're going to come in and flag me on when you come and do the audit next year? Because I need to know now." She said, "No, there is absolutely no problem." She said, "Now, what the problem, the only problem may be is you might show your accounts receivable being different from a previous year, but as long as you know the reason why, that shouldn't be a problem for you." So, then I went over and talked to folks in Henrico. And they also pointed out that this has been done before. Some of the localities back during COVID, they actually have already done this before. They've gone and had collection dates in the next fiscal year. All right? So, not only has it been done before, it's totally okay with the auditors. So, my reason for bringing all this up is, going back to what I said before, you've got a situation, whatever the amount is, if it's $2 million, $3 million, once we quantify what that number is with the commissioner of revenue and the county administrator, we have the ability to address the bubble, to address the issue that we're going to have with sticker shock, and be able to not have to even consider doing rebates, because Keystone has already told us they don't know how to do that. So, I'm not interested in taking the people's money and then having to go through the telephones lighting up over at the county administration building and on the board with irate citizens when they get their personal property tax, when their vehicle has, going to go up hundreds of dollars on their taxes. So, if I can mitigate this now on the front end with what has been proposed by Mr. Timberlake, and what I know is doable from the two constitutional officers, and now, I know from the financial side that the auditors don't have a problem with the collection date running over into July, that's what I want to do. I want to get in front of this, just like the other localities have. I don't want to have to react. I don't want to have to say I'm going to monitor it next, you know, this coming year. I want to be able to address the problem now. And going back to what Mr. Cox said, this is not money we accounted on. Let's be clear on this. This is not money that we accounted on to use. So, it doesn't affect the budget. This is your money. Only thing we're doing is trying to normalize a situation that's anomalous. So, those are my points, Mr. Chairman, and that's, that's what I'm going to be proposing that we do, you know, for the personal property. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or these people, I'm sure would be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Mr. Williams, I do have a question. What exactly are you proposing? You said it was what Jamie Timberlake proposed. Are you proposing, you said, "We can't do a rebate." If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Timberlake didn't propose lowering the property tax. What did he propose?
Mr. Timberlake, would you come forward, please?
So, and we confirmed with Mr. Latsney today that this is allowable by state code. There's a methodology for assessing that the commissioners and all the localities or their finance people decide is what fits in their region. So, we use clean loan value for what we call 100% assessed value. The state code allows with us in conjunction, as long as the commissioner and the board agrees, to only collect a percentage of that. And there are localities that do it all, that have done it for years. I, I don't like it on a long-term strategy, because I think it's smoke and mirrors. But in this case, it does, it does give us a tool to address it currently and then acknowledge, and the citizens have to be aware too, that this is not a long-term thing. This will phase itself back out as car values go back to declining in value, which is what we expect them to do. So, next year, we can readdress it if, you know, once we decide on a percentage this year, if that's the way we go, you can readdress it next year until eventually that just goes away and we're back to 100% of clean loan value and tax bills look the same the way that they have for years and years. I think that's what he's saying, that the, what we have not figured out and has to be done pretty quickly is what that percentage is. I just did 25% because that's what J.D. Power was telling us in our economic projections and the meetings that we had in February, in January and February.
Let me ask you another question.
Yes, ma'am.
The 35% licensing fee, is that a pretty easy fix? As far as billing goes? Any complications with that?
I misunderstood what you said, 35%?
As far as, there's a lot of seemingly manipulation with the bills. We have to extend the due date. We have to do a myriad of things to make this proposal plausible. Mr. Byerly made a motion to eliminate the $35 licensing fee, which means it goes away for every vehicle.
That's correct.
From what you told me, that's a button you push, and you could proceed expeditiously and get these property tax bills out, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing I would like to point out, you made a comment. This is smoke and mirrors.
Yep.
You said, say that one more time.
It is smoke and mirrors.
It's smoke and mirrors.
It's telling you, "This is what your car is worth, but we're only going to tax you on a percentage of that."
Okay.
And, and there, like I say, there are localities that do that on a regular basis, and that's why I would not propose this long-term.
Okay.
This is something that we need to acknowledge, addresses this situation, and needs to be dealt with when this situation goes away.
So, what I would like the citizens of Powhatan County to know is what Mr. Byerly's proposal is, is not smoke and mirrors. It's in perpetuity. Every year, you will no longer have a $35 per vehicle, per boat, per trailer licensing fee. Henrico, you know, it was brought up that they went from 350 to 260, whatever it was, 268. None of these jurisdictions eliminated their licensing fee, not one, that I have seen so far. I mean, maybe I misread, but I have not seen any that have eliminated the licensing fee. Again, it's a quote-unquote "one-time, one-year gimmick," even the rebate, but it's not addressing the actual real fundamental cost. I mean, one thing, you eliminate a licensing fee, you eliminate year-over-year that fee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As a way, one comment to that, if somebody owns more than one vehicle, it's more than $35. You multiply it by how many vehicles you own, so there, there would be more. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
I have a question from Mrs. Carmack, because I don't understand totally. So, you want to do, I understand you want to eliminate the, the license fee. Do you also want to deal with a personal property tax? You want to do both of them?
Currently, no, because I believe I got a different report from it being a problem with the auditor. I heard that, one thing about it, it doesn't make good business sense to be having a collection rate in the following year with cash flow. And from what I heard, that is, Mr. Smith, you were the former finance director of Henrico County. Can you weigh in a little bit?
Yeah, I don't see any locality ever moving the due date past June 30. If it's almost a black eye in the, in the bond market, in the credit market, you collect, you set your due date at June 30. Now, in emergency situations like we had in 2020, Henrico, Chesterfield, Powhatan, all did, I think Powhatan did, extended the penalty and interest. I'm not sure, we did not. But there are oftentimes in emergency situations where you extend the penalty and interest date and not the due date. And those type of reactions are commonplace, but when, but not extending the due date outside the fiscal year. It's, you know, can you do it? Yeah. Can you, you know, is it, is it smart business? No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
What would you rather get? Relief on the $35 or relief on that evaluation on your $10,000 truck that just went up $4,000? $4,000. So, if you do the math, you, you look at, okay, how many hundreds is that? Times 360, $3.60. Now, this is not, you know, you can call it smoke and mirrors, and let's put this in context again, what Jamie is referring to in his personal opinion, that if you were doing this on an ongoing basis, probably wouldn't be comfortable with it. But this year, this is a means of dealing with a situation where people are not going to have to mail in that check hundreds of dollars more. Okay? We know what the problem is. We know how to fix the problem this year. $35, I think, is a great idea. You know, as I said last time, Chesterfield came in and reduced theirs, I believe, by half at the TPO meeting. You know, Mr. Holland came in and announced that. That was one of his longtime goals. So, I'm not against that, but what I am against is addressing the problem. This, this, the $35 don't get it, doesn't get at the problem that we're seeing with the bubble. I'm going to take issue with the county administrator. I know that's going to surprise some people, but, but I didn't hear the same thing coming over the phone today when I was having the conversations with, with Megan and with college... the phone today when I was having the conversations with, with Megan and with colleagues and other jurisdictions who have higher qualifications than Mr. Smithers. Man, that sounds slight to you, but you know what I'm saying.
No, it doesn't.
Well, I'm going to say this, you know, your boss didn't have any problem, your old boss didn't have any problem with recommending this and saying, yeah, you can do it, you can have a collection date next year. And he was the one, one of the people that said, yes, this has been done before. In terms of, if we were doing this every year or we had a pattern of it and we didn't know why, what the, you know, the reason was, that'd be one thing. But this is a situation where we have an unusual situation, a bubble that nobody could have foresaw, and we're able to deal with it on a responsible basis. We're not going to run ahead of money. We're going to be fine. So I'm, I'm going to take, take a different view and do like I did. Form your own opinion. Pick up the phone and call people. You know, the auditors work for us. You know, they don't mind, Sharon. If there was going to be a problem, I wanted to know upfront what the problems were.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, when, when you have time.
You, you guys want to sit down, Lee? Make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, come up there.
So as Treasurer, it is my duty to produce the bills and collect the bills. And Jamie and I have looked at the timeline, and if it would be beneficial, we believe we can probably get the bills if we push the due date to June 29th on personal property. Leave real estate at the 20, we would propose moving that to the 24th. Push real, push personal property to the 29th. We believe we can produce the bills and get them in the mail. We won't be able to give the customary 30 days that we are, that is our goal. We are required by law to give 14 days. It would give them about 28 days to pay taxes. At the same time, I would also propose you move the penalty and interest date to August 1st.
And get rid of licenses. Don't forget that.
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now, so we'll, 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 we'll go at it and see what the board's pleasure is there. If you guys want to sit down, make yourselves comfortable.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Let's, as we talk about the license fee, there was angst on the part of some members at our last meeting about impact on CIP. We've already impacted our CIP revenues with a tax rate reduction. The $35 license fee is another million, one million, two against the CIP. The personal property bubble that we're talking about has no impact on the CIP. So just need to remember that. You're going to have less money to spend long-term, and from my vantage point, the license fee, it's a fee we can do at any time. It's not restricted to budget. We can fix that anytime we want. And it serves, it does nothing to deal with the bubble that we're having. Bridget, would you put back up 2023 personal property tax folder? And when you've got that, I'll tell you which one I'd like for you to go to. This goes back to Jamie's example. This is not a crazy example. I want you to look at the $448 number. Yes, Mr. McClung, some people have more than one car. Some people have more than one $448 bill too. Okay? This is real. This is coming at our community. Now, I'm not going to support anything that doesn't deal with this personal property bubble because I don't want to be on, I want to be able to say, it wasn't me, it was my colleagues. I don't think you want to be standing in front of this tsunami which is about to hit. So we need, we need a solution, and $35 is not a solution. You want to, you want to pile on $35? I couldn't care less, okay? But we've got to deal, in my opinion, with the personal property piece. And I'm going to suggest to you that we should defer the budget until we have a vote on the budget, until we have a resolution on this. Unless you're, if, if there are three of you who don't want to deal with this, then we will find out tonight, okay? But if we're going to deal with this, then we need to put the budget off. We've got plenty of time to handle the budget and get some real numbers because the budget number that you're looking at for 2023 for personal property that's in your budget is bogus. It isn't real, okay? Even Mr. Smithers says it's going to have 2.9 million more, okay? So what you have in your budget is 10 million bucks, 11 million bucks. That's what's in the budget, Mr. Smithers. Look on page 26.
Okay? Not quite, Mr. Cox, but I'll still go with it. Not quite.
Okay, so anyway, our citizens are about to have a significant problem, and we've got to make a decision on whether we're going to ignore this problem when we have a solution and give them $35, or we're going to address it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? None but mine. Once I make mine, there'll be some more. It's a pretty good show. It's a real good show. I think everybody up here is looking out for your pocketbooks. Everybody up here wants this county to succeed. I'm going to try to be short. That's probably a hard thing for me to do, but I'm going to try to be. We are not Henrico County. We are not Chesterfield County. I've got numbers galore up here. I listen to the public, to people come down and talk, public say, you know, we want a tax cut, we want a tax cut, we want a tax cut, we need a tax cut. You got a tax increase tonight. That's reality. 77 cents is a tax increase. There's a lot of information. It's an enormous amount of information. The first year I was on this board, this board basically did the budget itself. We had Mr. Shardine helping us out as an interim county administrator. And it, it, it's a lot of detail. It's a lot of numbers. I mean, a lot for even us to follow, or I'll just speak for myself, me to follow. And the numbers change and the numbers move, and there's different things that you don't know about, and you talk to Mr. Timberlake, and he says 16 million, and, but he clarifies it in his email, you know, that's, you're not guaranteed to get the 16 million. That's the total amount if everybody paid their bill. That made me think about the smoke and mirror comment too, brought a little bit more of it back to me. In 2020, when we're going to get 92% collection rate with the crystal ball, we're not going to get our normal 97, we're going to charge you 85 cents on the tax rate. Well, looking into the future, you missed that one quite a bit. Now, we're into the, trying to look into the future again, but we're talking about something that's happening right now. And what we should be doing is talking about right now and into the future and covering it as best we can for the county and everyone. Henrico County's operating budget in 2021, without any pay-go, which is pay-as-you-go, was $134 million. Chesterfield was $126 million. Powhatan was $9 million. I'm just going to tell you, and it's no disrespect to Henrico or Chesterfield, I don't really care what they're doing, okay? Can I listen to them? Can I learn from them? Sure. Can I be open-minded? Sure. But the decisions that I'm going to make is for Powhatan County. We've listened, we're up, our backs are up against the wall, backs are up against the wall, backs are up, well, let's just move it a little farther. You know, I get an email today, we all got an email from Ms. Nunley. And I'll just read you, you know, she, there was two things about, you know, have any interest in penalty parameters extended, and then the other part is, you know, the abatement or the rebate, or the, the discounting of the, the percentage of money, and that, just a one line, that process seems more complex, costly, and with all the factors that would come into play, seems to leave room for error. She talked to Keystone. Please see their response below. We've read enough emails lately, I don't need to read the whole email to you. Ms. Nunley, I would be comfortable allowing the taxpayers additional time to pay without penalty and interest, because that seems like the more simplified solution with a lower risk for error. Ms. Nunley, I would be very nervous entertaining the second option, which is the option of the abatement or the rebate, the percentage changing going out in the dates. Entertaining, I would be very nervous entertaining the second option with, with Keystone, as my confidence along with that, my entire office is mediocre, talking about Keystone. We've heard about Keystone and the issues and the problems that we have. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to wave our magic wand, oh, this problem's going to go away, this is all going to come together. What we think we can do in three or four days, or four or five days, or by this date or by that, yeah, we can do it, no problem. We don't control Keystone. Richmond Business Sense, April 15th, 2022, Henrico's budget increase was 8.1%. Henrico's adding 84 teachers. Henrico's adding 11 firefighters. Henrico's adding 22 law enforcement officers. Henrico had 87 cents tax rate for years. Powhatan, we're up and down. We, we were at 72, we hit a crisis. Let's jump it up to 90. That's what the board did. I think it was one swipe. Does that sound right, Mr. Timberlake? You're agreeing, nodding. At one time. You can't predict the future. You can do a budget. Mr. Williams was very good in bringing forth that we do a 10-year CIP, and I believe in that today. I've not changed my mind on that at all. I think it's very wise, I think it's smart, but you can't predict what's going to happen. You don't know when the storm's going to hit. But the budget was set up to weather the storms. That's the way you should be trying to budget, not by the day, not by the week, not by the six months or the year. Charlotte, Finance Director, says, not in 25 years have you seen anybody do this. I know, you're not the only one in the Commonwealth or the East Coast, but I, but you've got a lot of experience, and I think you were an auditor before you took this job, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I could just go on with other things. We spent a lot of time on something that was a little bit off of the motion. And another thing that maybe when it comes to this personal property tax, I think, when you've seen that 16 million number, Mr. Timberlake related to it when he was up here, the state of Virginia gives us 3.02 million. That's inclusive of that. The 16 million is inclusive of the 3.02 million. So there's a lot of numbers that you come to a meeting, or you watch a meeting, or we've had 10 or 11 of these, maybe 10 of these meetings, I guess, budget meetings, and you catch on to this. It's not the simplest thing to catch on to. It's not. It's pretty complex. There's lots of numbers that are involved. I know the 2.9 number that Mr. Cox showed on his PowerPoint. Our original proposed budget by Mr. Smithers had increased to some degree, but it was a conservative number. And that's why you didn't see that number go up, and the 2.9 million was the difference. I like the licensed vehicle fee. That's where I'm at. There's a motion on the floor. Let's have a roll call vote, Mr. Smithers.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, I'm going to be more succinct than what you had hoped to be. I'm going to be very succinct. It's going to be just two corrections. And this concerns Mrs. Nunley's email to us when she was referring to the potential for problems and complexities, and you said option two, that was on the rebate. That was where we were doing this. This is not what, what was brought forward tonight, was it's not doing a rebate. So that was the only correction I had, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yay.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
We're still on the budget, gentlemen. We've eliminated the licensed vehicle fee. There is the revenue stabilization comment that come up, if anybody wants to discuss that.
I do.
Absolutely.
We got into conversations about bond rates and things like that. Having a revenue stabilization fund helps your bond rating. It doesn't decrement it, it helps it. I see it as a positive. I did back in 2020. No, we didn't have to use it, but because you didn't have to use it, that doesn't mean you take away all those things that you are, or that you have that can address situations, just like what we had come up tonight, this discussion about the car tax increase. No, we, we didn't, you had to use in the last two years. That doesn't mean that we want one day. But if you go, and again, go to the other localities, even Gushland, they have it. So I, I see it as a plus. What I see this as, is a means of offsetting some of the reductions that we've done tonight, you know, with the tax rate and the 35 million, excuse me, the $35 license fee. This is what I see it as. For some reason, we feel like, you know, we have to worship the model. Now, every model changes. You look at economic models around the world, they're changing, and they don't always agree, but they respond to what's going on around them. And I have said this, you know, about the future, Mark Twain, I've quoted him, predicting is a difficult business, particularly when it comes to the future. None of us are particularly good at it. I'm not, you know, I don't know. That's why, you know, I care around in life insurance policy, because I don't know. But in terms of, you know, being able to run a county that's in keeping with what I see the butter counties doing, I don't see any reason to take this out. I don't see any reason at all. Oh, then it looks like we're trying to make up for money where we gave back money on the revenue side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
As far as the bond rating goes, we're double bond, they're double A currently. In order to get to AAA, that was sort of one of the sales pitches with the revenue stabilization fund. But the reality is, in order to be a triple bond rated locality, it's more than the revenue stabilization fund. Yeah, that's a nice benefit, that's a feature, but we don't have nearly the businesses that is going to propel Powhatan County into a triple bond rated category, just not going to happen, no time soon. I am, you, you're correct that I'm proposing eliminating this to follow the model, exactly as you had said, you know, a lot of well-run, large jurisdictions, you know, have a revenue stabilization fund. They also have a steady tax rate, which we agreed upon last year, and tonight, we eliminated that. So for me, this is a way to offset that two-cent tax reduction. It puts the money in the general fund, and it doesn't have these parameters around it. We will probably, I, I don't see us bringing it back. And furthermore... with the biannual billing that we have, that should not be a problem with not having a revenue, revenue stabilization fund. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to respond to Mrs. Carmack's comments because I never said that this was related to us achieving a triple A bond rating. Now, let's be clear. What I was talking about was improving or maintaining a bond rating. I never said we were going to get to triple A. Now, there are gradations within two. Double A, aren't there, Mr. Smith?
Double A, yes, sir.
Okay, so there are gradations with Standard and Poor's and Moody's where you don't have to get to a triple A or you're just a double A, you have gradations. So that's going to be one of the points that I'm making. Now, you keep saying, every meeting we've had in the budget, that, you know, we agreed to keep it at seventy-nine cents. Now, I can go back and show you where Mr. Barley and I said, we weren't sure that we wanted to keep it at seventy-nine cents time in Memorial. I didn't say that. I said, you know, if I need to, I will take it and I think we'll have an opportunity before we leave office to lower it again. So what I'm doing is just like the Federal Reserve, I'm responding to what's going on around me. And we've always said we could use the capital improvement plan to be able to navigate when we had to. And that's all I'm proposing or was proposing tonight. We can do it. I mean, as Mr. Cox pointed out, we're, we're not in this terrible financial situation. In fact, we're a pretty good financial situation when you stop and look at it. And I think all of us agree to that. That's, that's my only point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Revenue Stabilization Fund. This is going to make a fascinating story for you, Laura. The school, because we took a million dollars from the school and we told them we'd put it in a fund so it would be there for them when they needed it. So what we're going to do is close the store, the story on that and said, no, 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 it's not going to be there for you. We really took it so we can spend it on ourself. And that's what we're doing. If we take away with that, we're spending it on ourself. So rather than really taking a look at our CIP and how things get in there and how things get spent and which projects we're going to manage, we want to loot the revenue stabilization fund. And so, and we'll tell the schools, yep, you're right. We lied to you. Thank you.
According to Mr. Cole, last night, we lied to him when we told him we were going to talk about it in November and we didn't. Is there a motion on the floor?
Bring it back up now.
It's already here, just.
I made the motion.
Okay, so the motion is to, to remove the revenue stabilization plan and return those funds to the general fund. Could we, is there a second on that?
I seconded here.
Mr. Barley, could, before, could, what number, what, what, what number are we talking about? What, what, I don't.
We don't have a number. We made a motion. You're talking about a rev.
How much money is in the revenue?
Oh.
How much money, we, we, how much can we move it?
Right, the dollar.
Three percent of expenditures.
How, what are the dollar amounts, please?
They change from year to year, sir.
What is the dollar amount we're moving tonight?
We're moving three percent of expenditures.
How much?
We'll know at June thirtieth, once we have our final expenditures.
Once we have. So we want to make a motion and we don't know how many dollars we're actually moving.
We, we know it's three percent of whatever we spent at June thirtieth was going into that reserve fund. It will no longer go there under this motion.
Okay, talk about smoke and mirrors. So the motion is on the floor. It's been seconded. All call vote. Mr. Smithers.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
Aye. Okay. The we still have to discuss this budget of, of whether we're going to approve this budget, amend this budget. What do you, what do you all want to do?
Chairman, I would like to deal with, I would like to explore the personal property solution that we're talking about tonight. You know, they're enabled to us, for us to be able to do that properly, we need to defer the budget and get that resolved.
Want to make a motion? Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer the, I need, I need a meeting date, so I don't. We've got to defer it to a specific time.
But you want to go to June, sometime in June? I mean, the June meeting is June the twentieth.
What is on our regular?
Excuse me, the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven. No, I don't want to go to the twenty-seventh. What do we have, what do we have in the first of June? Let's have a meeting.
We, we, we don't, we don't have a meeting scheduled. We actually have the twenty-first open for a workshop of June, the twenty-first of June.
I don't want, I don't want to be late in June. There's no reason to be late in June.
What, what day do you want? You want to be on a, a, how about the seventh of June? Does that work? That's a Tuesday. I mean, I'm okay with.
That's fine with me.
Planning Commission.
Ah.
How about Monday?
What's the purpose of putting it off?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Monday, the sixth. Okay. So you're making a motion?
That we defer the decision on the budget until June sixth. Purpose of that is to get a better handle on how to deal with the personal property bubble and the impact on our budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that motion okay to do that, Mr. Lax? I mean, we're going off the schedule.
Well, the, the motion to defer to June sixth incorporates a motion to set that as a meeting day. Right, you guys, you guys can set a, a new meeting day anytime here. So it's, it's an emotion. Third in that motion is establishment of a date.
Does he, does he need a second to that motion? If anyone wants to second that?
Oh, sir.
Okay, we have a second. It's open for discussion. Ms. Carmack, you have a question?
Um, the personal property, if I'm not mistaken, we need to decide something tonight on that. I don't think we can wait. If, if, if we want to go with what Mr. Williams proposed, according to Ms. Nunley and Mr. Timberlake, they can still get these billing, the collection within this fiscal year. Am I correct? So we could do what he proposed and have the, not extend the colla, I, I will not support extending the billing past June thirty-first. Absolutely not. I will explore it if we can collect this year. And my point being is, we need to decide that tonight. We can't put it off and put it off and then put the budget off. I mean, the schools are waiting to hear from us. Let's make some decisions. And we've been having budget meetings now for months and we want to make a motion.
Um, there, there, there is a motion on the floor.
I meant, I meant, or figured that we make a motion about, let's make some decisions and.
Well, there's, there's going to be a vote. That's what we're going to do. We're going, we're going to vote. I've got, would, would Ms. Nunley come up here, please? Mr. Timberlake, you, please, please come on.
I'd like to hear this conversation, sir.
Excuse me?
I would like to hear that conversation.
Yeah. We haven't voted on, he's asking, have we voted on that? We haven't voted on his budget. That's why we're talking about that.
Well, no, that, that will help me because I'm getting confused right now myself.
So.
I like Mrs. Carmack's comments. You know, I, I agree with you. You know, we need to decide, you know, what we're going to do. All right.
Since I made the motion, can, Mr. Barley, can I make sure everybody understands what my motion was? It was not to ignore the personal property tonight, but to make the finalized vote on the budget on June sixth. We've got to, Mrs. Carmack is one hundred percent correct.
Yes.
That we've, we've got to deal with the personal property, but that, once we know that, then we'll have a better idea of what the budget numbers really look like. And we have plenty of time to deal with it. So I, this, your, your point's correct, but I separated the two.
Okay, so it's not about personal property tax. This is, this is all about moving the budget deadline to June.
The six.
Yeah, the vote, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think we're all right now. We've got that clear.
Keep them down here. Yes.
But you, you can hang out close by. Apparently, there's some more questions that's coming. You have questions, Ms. Carmack?
For them in a little bit when we talk about personal property.
Okay, so right now, there's a motion on the floor to extend this budget to June the sixth. That's what the motion is.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to give anything to the schools? I mean, I'm getting a little concerned because I think we have, I, I don't know if we have teacher contracts that are pending, raises that are pending. I, I would feel more comfortable if we could make some sort of decision regarding the budget tonight. I think that's only fair.
Well, my, my point of this is, we have a motion on the floor. Let's vote on the motion. There's a second on the motion. Let's vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Uh, to address Mrs. Carmack's concerns, I was surprised last night that we were not asked, okay? I think that tells you how tuned out.
Right.
Okay, a couple of senior members of their administration are. We can, we can certainly pass a percentage of the school's budget tonight. Okay, eighty percent, seventy-five percent. We've done that before.
Yeah, we did in two thousand and twenty.
And so I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. Any other questions about this? Good. Let's do a roll call, but Mr. Smith.
Mr. Williams?
Okay, would you read your, your motion again, Mr. Cox?
Uh, the motion was to defer the decision on our budget to the June sixth meeting.
Okay, just, just refresh my memory. What did we vote on just recently?
The revenue stabilization.
And right before that, what did we vote on?
Uh, we voted on the.
License vehicle.
License fee.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, I'll, I'll support Mr. Cox's motion.
So you're calling, well.
Sure, Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
No.
Mr. Barley?
No. Okay. So. There's, um, another topic that was brought up tonight, the raises three to five percent. Anybody have any comments on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will be supporting a five percent raise.
Okay, Mr. Cox?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the comment I heard said that we had adopted a three percent position and I don't remember that ever happening.
No, I didn't hear that comment. When did you hear that?
Public comment tonight.
Oh, public comment. Oh, no, we haven't, no.
No.
No, I'm not, I'm talking, I'm not referring to the public.
No, no, I'm just said that they, in, in.
Right, yeah, we needed a side.
Okay.
Right.
But I don't ever remember us taking a position for three percent.
I don't either.
Okay.
We're on the same page, okay. We, we need to figure out where we are, though, what we're going to do. Uh, are we going to do three percent? We're going to do five percent? And, and, and how do we want to move forward on that?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that five percent is in the budget today. Ms. Carmack asked the question and we said, do we want to discuss three percent? I think most of us said we did at that time. We didn't discuss it. Okay, but five percent is in there now. So that's what the budget is. So everybody knows what we're voting on.
Right.
I support five.
You're on five?
Yep.
Good. I'm on five. Um, then the budget is R twenty twenty-two dash thirteen A. I'll make a motion to approve that budget.
I'll second that.
Floor is open for conversation. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Bridget, could we go to the file that says CIP primer? Uh, since CIP is part of it, as I want to talk about the CIP a little bit. It says CIP primer. And you'll go to the first, you'll go to number one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. All right, this is about the capital improvement program and it's a short, sweet primer, always called CIP. Could we go to the next page, please? Number two. This is definition, the CIP includes facilities with a useful life of at least fifteen years and with a project cost of at least twenty-five thousand. County does not include vehicles in its CIP, but it has a, an associated program to put cars in and you'll see that in a moment. Typically, historically, CIP projects have come from our staff, bubbled up. They've done the research and the board then takes a look at where the CIP fits in terms of priority and timing. Those generalizations. Could we have the next slide, please? Number three. Funding sources for the CIP. In large part, they come from four different areas, surplus funds from the county operating budget, grants, debt, and CVTA is Central Virginia Transportation Authority. Because of the regional consortium, we are now getting dollars actually sent to Powhatan to work on roads, something we hadn't had in the past. Could we go to the next? The next one's going to be an example of a project that you would see in the CIP. You can't read it. You don't really need to. This was to develop a fire and rescue training facility. So it describes what it is. It also tells you what the operating impacts are, if there are any. Uh, it tells you what the project in the middle, what the justification is. Uh, in this one, they're looking to foster regional partnerships, provide estate-funded burn buildings, and it meets their strategic plans and objectives. So a real interesting discussion about why it's there. Then it provides for project cost estimates as well as funding sources and at what time period it's going to be. So this, this is an example of a fairly typical CIP project. Could we go to the next page, please? We'll give you a ten-year snapshot, okay, from the financial model in the current CIP. The surplus funds projection was at seventy-nine cents. That will change. But over ten years would add up to forty-four million dollars. The American Rescue Plan Act is two million bucks. Our total CIP needs, projects that are in there today, is sixty-two million dollars. Other capital needs is twenty-three million. The other capital needs are vehicles, fire apparatus, and there are seven million dollars worth of IT structure in there. So that's what the other capital needs, just up a little bit more. So a total of eighty-five million dollars. So we have forty-six million, we think. Uh, and we have needs of eighty-five million. So this tells you that you need to be really very careful about how you assess and what you put into the CIP. Could we have the next one? Could we have the next one? These are twenty twenty-three budget additions. Senior Center, there's no timeframe, there's no justification, and there is just a flat amount that relates to nothing. Land Economic Development, timeframe twenty twenty-three, there's no justification, it's a million dollars. And missing, we've talked about it earlier, was a village park. What is interesting about this is starting in, uh, November of twenty twenty-one, our process for putting a project into the CIP changed. No longer was it just bubbling up, uh, from our staff who analyzed, put things together, and provided a kind of, uh, material I show you before. It became the three-vote rule. So if I have three votes, I don't need any information, and I'll put it in there. Senior Center, we have no information at all. We're going to get some. And we have the five hundred thousand dollars relates to nothing. Land Economic Development for a million bucks. This is Mr. Smithers deal. So let's look at how we've done with that. We bought a piece of property for Eastern Convenience Center. And we can't use it for the Eastern Convenience Center. The PPF says we have to, we can't use it, we have to have another piece of property. Strike one. Mr. Smith and closed session brought two pieces of property to us. He wanted to explore them, he wanted to put contracts on them. The first one, his staff shot down. Strike two. The third one, I asked to have sent to the EDA for evaluation. On last Monday, they've said they see no economic development potential in it. Strike three. We don't have any competencies here. There should be no million dollars. The three-vote rule destroys the financial integrity of our CIP system. And so it's, but it's not just the financial piece. Could we go to the next? It also has impact on our staff. I want to read to you part of a letter that was written to Mr. Smith by Ramona Carter as she departed. And it's really relevant. She says, in the past year, I've witnessed a significant decline in staff morale. As a team, we weathered COVID and managed to continue projects while working remotely. I feel communication from the administration to the leadership team is lacking and has created work silos instead of a team. I feel that the staff does not have any part in decision-making processes and are often excluded from meetings and decisions that impacts the projects they are managing. This is what happens with a three-vote rule. We take staff out, they don't like it. Their job is being taken away from them. They're being told what to do. This has created a work environment with little to no trust or respect, and it goes on. So not only does the three-vote rule with no information hurt us in terms of our financial integrity, it has a major impact on our staff, a very negative impact on our staff. So, uh, just, uh, no surprise, I won't be supporting, uh, the CIP that has either the, uh, million dollars, uh, and I will not support the half million dollars to the senior center until it meets the objectives, the proper objectives to get it in there, which has means it has to have some real information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else? Any other questions? Comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You want to go again?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Nobody's jumping up here, so.
I know, I, it's not a line. What are we going to do about personal property? Are we going to deal with that or not?
We we have a a motion on the floor.
Right, which is a budget, okay?
Right.
I want to know, are we, as part of that, are we going to do anything with a personal property? That's a question. Are you just not gonna give me an answer?
No, I I don't have anything to do with the personal property tax, or, you know, are you gonna do anything with it? You know, the board's the one that's gonna do something with it. There's a motion on the floor, we're gonna work on that motion. Would you like to amend the motion?
I want to know, are we gonna do anything?
Would you like to amend the motion?
I would like to know, are we gonna do anything with personal property tonight? That that will be relevant to my decision on the budget, that's all.
I think when 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 we talked about personal property tax, we went through, uh, the, uh, license vehicle fee, and, uh, we took about an hour between you and Mr. Williams going over the personal property tax that you would like to see happen.
Right.
Um, do you want to make a motion regarding that?
Well, I just want to know, that's that is part of the, that has a major impact on the budget, and I can't make.
I understand you can't make a decision, make a motion.
Well, no, you you have a motion on the floor, you already have that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
Okay.
Let's do a roll call, but.
Mr. Williams?
Well, I'm, I'm made a little bit unclear. And thank you for your comments, Mr. Chair, because I had the feeling when we had the discussion that you referred to about the thirty-five dollar, you know, license fee, that we had indeed, at that point, decided between the personal property, that, um, and that was my feeling coming out of that conversation. That's why I just, you know, asked to go back, what did we just vote on? Because my feeling was that the direction of the board was we were going to do the thirty-five dollars, and we weren't going to do what I had proposed or spoke about. Was that the consensus of the board?
That was my feeling.
Yeah, that was my feeling.
Yeah.
So I would, I would like to hear from other colleagues, you know, like, you know, my wingman over here. Was that your feeling, that we had made the decision to go with the chairman's recommendation of just doing the personal property, doing the, uh, thirty-five-dollar license fee, and would not be considering what I proposed, you know, with addressing the bubble a different way?
Yes, it was, yes.
So, Ms. Carmack, was that your feeling as well?
It was my feeling when Ms. Nunley and Mr. Timberlake came down and said that we could possibly address this in this year, that gave me a little different. I'm not doing it if it's going after, you know, June thirty-first, I said that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not doing that.
So.
Would I enter myself, would I entertain looking at it, um, for this year? Sure, I mean, we could talk about it, but.
Going back to the chair, yeah.
But you didn't make a motion.
Yeah, no, no, I, I thank you for the clarification, because, again, you know, sitting around the table here, you know, everybody's picking up on different things, but I I do agree with you as well. And Mr. Brown, you ask, okay, we have a motion on the floor, if it would provide clarification, I can make a substitute motion at this time to go forward with the recommendation for relief on personal property using the information that was provided to us just recent by Ms. Nunley and the Commissioner of Revenue as to how they could do it, keeping the, you know, dates within the fiscal year. Okay, I will, I can make that as a separate motion, as a substitute motion, and then we can get clarity on a vote whether or not we want to do that or not. Is that something?
And and you're, you have, you have, as far as my knowledge, he can do the substitute motion, we did this a couple, three weeks ago.
Well, technically, it's it's a different motion, so you would have to concede the, you you basically, you would, you would withdraw your motion and and allow Mr. Williams to substitute.
Well, I'm not gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay, but that this discussion then gives, I think, people certification about where we stand as a board.
Right.
Okay.
Correct, which I think, you know, everybody had the understanding, or at least.
Well, Ms. Carmack, Ms. Carmack seemed, you know, I'm not speaking for her, and I don't want, if I, if I get into this long, you know, hit me upside the head. But I I heard from her that, you know, not having the collection date in the next fiscal year, that was something that she would consider if we, but she said she was anathema or against having a collection date aside the fiscal year, but.
That is correct, to one thing about to, um, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
To Mr. Cox's point, um, the personal property that we were estimating originally regarding this budget was not what Mr. Timberlake had proposed, it was at a much lower rate. So my point being is, we can pass this budget, and the the personal property is really not gonna affect it because we were never expecting to get that much money. Say hypothetically, we do decide to do something with the collections, we're not gonna decrement the, um, we're probably gonna however your rebate or whatever the thing is that you're talking about.
I'm not talking about rebate.
I know, I know, I didn't know what else to call it, I I don't know what it's called, I still can't quite figure it out.
I just want to make sure.
It's it's not gonna probably be less than the our original anticipated collection rate. So I think we can make a move along, vote on this budget, and then if you want to make another motion regarding that, we can open that up. That's my opinion.
Well.
That's clear.
Just just a comment, you're you're right, we have an amount in the budget, but now if it's two-point-nine more million, this will be going into the general fund, how is that gonna be used? Is that gonna be used to offset, you know, the real estate tax reduction of seventy-seven cents? Is it gonna be used to reduce, you know, the impact of the thirty-five dollars of one-point-one million dollars? That's the reason for the question.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, the budget you have in front of you here in this package does include the updated personal property revenue projections and the corresponding adjustments. So that this is an updated budget you you got in front of you today with the two-point-nine million dollars extra.
Okay, let me, let me make sure I'm with you on that, because that's on the A and B.
On the A.
A.
Okay.
A.
Let me, let me take a quick one. I got too much, but. So estimated revenues is fifty-two million point four. Property taxes, no, excuse me, uh, property taxes is fifty-two. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so that would include the personal property.
Yes.
Okay, so when I go and look at, you know, other information, I see that I'm looking at this. About, see. But when I look at this, the personal property is broken out, and it's eleven million. Okay, so is it eleven million, or is it eleven million plus two-point-nine?
A couple of things, Mr. Williams, eleven million is there is all personal property, which includes business personal property, machinery, tools. So that's just not vehicles.
So it's all levels.
It's all levels. And it's, and the second thing, that's that's the number before we made the two-point-nine million dollar adjustment, once we got the good book numbers from the, uh, city powers. So that, you're looking at a couple of weeks old numbers.
It looks like it looks like the chairman wants to go forward with the vote on the motion that's been made. My question is, can I make a separate motion later that we go back and reconsider what we've heard from the constitutional officers? I see Chairman.
I I I'm pretty sure I I I'll refer to this, defer to him, but I'm pretty sure that, you know, and that kind of gets, not to muddy this water, and as you all can see, it gets muddied easily. But I think that's what Ms. Carmack is saying, you know, the property tax issue, we we can come back next month or July and and go down that road with that.
No.
No.
Nope, so it's muddied even more worse.
No, that's not time for us.
Right, but but I mean, see, I'm looking at it, if we get into a.
Has to be done tonight.
Into a November.
No.
Can't do it.
Okay.
Strategize for two thousand and twenty-three.
Right, yeah, to to go for the next year.
Yeah.
No, I know.
No, no, they.
Yeah, you you're wanting to go right now, get it done, the the.
I want to address it. I want to address it now to mitigate the bills that are gonna go away, where people are gonna see their personal property go up hundreds of dollars. That that that's the goal.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't want to wait a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're we're getting clarity.
We're getting.
That's good.
Yep, yep.
That's good.
Okay. Back to your question, can you make a separate motion?
And, yes. Okay, so what do you vote on the budget?
Budget.
Do you concern, you can always amend your budget.
Right, it's amendable at any time.
If you change tax rates, you can always come back and amend the budget.
Right.
Yeah, I I my only comments on the motion is I have similar concerns with Mr. Cox, you know, about the capital improvement plan. Uh, I have, you know, the same concerns I had last night, you know, with transfer, about what's being funded into that, you know, with the supplement retirement, or excuse me, medical.
Medical, healthcare, right.
So that's my only comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, so the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Williams? Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Oh.
Ms. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Brown, he finally voted for a budget.
I did vote for one, that's the first time, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll make my motion now that we, uh, taking consideration the information that we've received from the Commissioner of Revenue and Ms. Nunley, the Treasurer, that we can indeed accomplish within this fiscal year, sending out the bills and collecting, having a collection date and the year-end date of June thirtieth, whereby we can do the necessary work to reduce the anomaly, the bubble that we see with their vehicles, uh, inflation, to be able to bring it down to a level that's normalized, that cancels out the bubble that we're seeing, that we can do all this within the timeframe of this fiscal year. So that's, that's my motion is that we direct them to go forward doing that. So that's the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification.
Please.
Does, do Ms. Nunley and Mr. Timberlake need the actual ratio number tonight?
That is something that.
I I mean, I think they need a number.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so my recommendation to them is to, when they are, you know, doing the calculations, that they look at how much is the bubble, and then come up with the percentage amount that that takes out the bubble. We talked about that. Okay, and they think they can do that. So I'm not gonna give them the percentage, I'm gonna let them calculate that as part of their work.
We need to know the percentage right now.
Well, what what state law says?
I believe.
What state law says is the commissioner may use a ratio, he's got a, he's, state law tells him how to assess cars. There's a provision in the code that says he may use a ratio with the concurrence of the local governing body. So you could make a motion to allow him to use a ratio that he subsequently determines. You could, you could give him that authority to make the determination on the number. State law simply says you gotta concur that he can use a ratio, it doesn't say you have to use the number. That would be up to you whether you want to know that number now, or whether you want to trust Mr. Timberlake and Ms. Nunley to come up with that number.
And and I mean, I'm gonna go ahead and put it on the table, and Charlotte and Mr. Smith, we're gonna do the Antifa, we're gonna do this together. That's not gonna be. And we'll do it tomorrow.
It's up to the board, you can give him, give them authority to come up with a number, or you can tell them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. McClung.
Too many uncertainties here for me, way too many uncertainties, uncertainties. And the timeline is so tight, and I'm I'm with Ms. Carmack, I'm not going past into another fiscal year, I'm not going past June thirty. It's just too many uncertainties.
The motion, the motion is that we do it within the fiscal year. We can't, we can't do it, we can't do it. I mean, that's not an avoid. The question on the table with the county attorney is, you know, about the county commissioner of revenue has the authority, and whether or not we want to allow him that authority based on our direction to normalize what is should be taking out the bubble. And he's, commissioner has already said that he would work with that gentleman and the county administrator and Charlotte to find out what that percentage is. I'll include that in the motion.
The motion needs a second.
Yeah, it does need a second. Mr. Cox, no second that, you know, but, yeah, it's the three-vote rule, right, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
But so.
But this is with information, thank you.
Let's, let's have.
Let's do a roll call.
Yeah, I I'm.
Be part. You have a question?
Yes, I would like to have a quick question for Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, what do you think of this, truthfully? I mean, what do you, what do you think of this?
I know we we've got an issue with the bubble, but to make a blind, not a blind, to make an adjustment right now and look at our forecast model out to see is affordability, a twenty percent adjustment is about a two-point.
to see is affordability, a 20% adjustment is about a 2.4, 2.5 million dollar number. Is that, is, is that the right plan right now in a hurried moment or is, is a, should we look at it? Other options, which includes next year, reduce the tax rate, next year, we're doing the same adjustment we're talking about here.
Okay.
Possibly doing the rebate, the indirect setup, you know, this year. But, but for us to now analyze and see affordability of a 20, a 2.4 million dollar decision right now, after we just cut taxes by 2.1 million on the other two topics, it's a big, it's a big thing to try to get our arms around and we're rushing it. So I, I just feel like we can, we can attack it in an orderly manner.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a big decision. Get your arms around. It's what you get paid for. We're talking about handling a major bill to citizens of Palatine that other jurisdictions are dealing with. To sit and say, well, we'll study it for a year while we lard our coffers with your money, citizens of Palatine. And we know the problem. It's just absolutely unacceptable to me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Timberlake?
I mean, I just wanted to remind of what we started the conversation with. This is not money that was in the budget. It's not money that was in the budget. So it's there to be able to, we just need to figure out what that percentage is. We know what the amount is. We just need to figure out what that percentage is. This is not hard math. Again, we, we, we muddy the waters a lot.
The waters are definitely muddy.
This is not.
I personally think.
We just need to figure out what that percentage is that we can give back. And, and I, but I'll be honest with you. I don't know if it'll mitigate the whole thing. I mean, I heard what you said. But what I'm saying is we have a number that we, it's a known number. We're going to figure out what that becomes in a percentage and we're going to apply it. That's how, that's the only way we have to address the bubble.
Mr. Chairman, I'm confused. I know it's going to surprise everybody, but.
Your motion. You're confused?
I'm confused on what I just heard. I'm, I'm. Because I'm confused because Mr. Smith said the money was in the, was in the budget. Now he's saying it's not in the budget. That's what I'm confused on. Y'all heard the same thing I did.
Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. It, it is in the budget. So the, 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 the good news and the bad news is the increase or more optimistic, she's going to say pessimistic, the increase in personal property tax for vehicles is in the budget, the bubble. In the same time, the reduction in the real estate tax rate and the license fee, the 2.1 million is in the budget. So all those pieces, those three tax pieces go into the, how the soup is made. And now we're, i- if we decide to do the, attack the bubble with a 20% number, we've got to figure out how to come up with 2.4, 2.5 million dollars.
Something's wrong. I know. We're not connecting on that because as I understand, you know, the commissioner, he said money is not in there. The money that's over and above, you know, what you had in the budget is not there.
It is. It is. It's in my new budget. It's in the budget that we got here due to.
Then that would be my misunderstanding and what was presented. Cause I, I thought that was above and beyond.
2.9 was, it was to add on to my whole budget. So it.
Right.
Right.
Oh. So just a question. The budget that we have tonight, the numbers we've seen tonight, those, that, that, that's the correct number.
That is the updated representative of the bubble and personal property.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
So, Mr. Smith, when did you update the budget?
We updated it last week.
Now, when did you add the 2, 2.9? You didn't talk about that until Friday. When, when have you delivered to us an updated budget?
Last week.
You had, you had budget comments. You didn't deliver us a, a budget. I mean, I'm getting to the point, okay? Here we sit here tonight.
It's been.
You're telling, you're telling me you've changed the budget.
Yes.
Okay. But you don't tell us that. Till here, we get here tonight, till he asks.
But Mr. Cox, your email right here shows 2.9 million dollar.
You said budget considerations. You didn't say put in a budget. It didn't say you put it in the budget. And what you said was, wow, well, wait till next year. I've read it. I've put it up there.
It's, it's pretty clear.
No, it's not. It's not. It's, it's, use Mr. Barley's term. It is clear as mud.
The, um.
I have a motion.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor. And let's get it repeated, being Mr. Williams was not clear for, let's repeat it.
I thought I was clear. I was confused on what I said in front of the two gentlemen. I will make the motion again that we move forward with requesting that the commission of revenue, working with the treasurer, work with Mr. Vu. Did I correct, did I finish my name correctly?
Vu.
Vu, I'm sorry. Something didn't come out right. Mr. Vu and the county administrator to understand what is the appropriate percentage to be used for the reduction of the bubble to bring it into what we consider the normalized range that takes out the bubble and to prepare the bills and to have them go out and for the collection date to be within the June 30th fiscal year deadline. Does that do it for you, Mr. Lackner?
Very well done motion, Mr. Williams. Yes.
Very, very specific.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Motion's been seconded. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Nay.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
No.
Mr. Barley.
No. Next up is the resolution R 2022 dash 14, extension of tax due date.
Thank you, Mr. Barley, members of the board. Ms. Nunley, if you could hang with us one second. We do need to change with the reference. I think we, Mrs. Nunley has discussed a, we asked for a June 24th due date on this resolution. We'd now like to move that to June 29th.
That was if we went with the, with Mr. Williams' proposal. I believe we can still stick with the June 24th if everything is.
Okay. Uh, and we also need to add the emergency declaration for the extended penalty and interest date.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Lackner, the language that I was, I wrote down, I don't know if it's correct, is in, in the last paragraph, I wrote, in addition, the board approves an emergency resolution to extend penalty and interest date to August 1, 2022.
Can we just extend the interest date? Penalty will go on the day after the due date.
Interest on. To August 1, 2022. Under, is, is it proper terminology, emergency declaration for that?
Yeah, well, it's, it's an emergency ordinance.
Okay.
So you can adopt, normally you have to advertise for an ordinance. You can adopt an emergency ordinance that you then have to, within 60 days, advertise and ratify or it becomes void.
So that, that change, what I would suggest if the board wanted to consider, not to add that to the list.
Let me get clarification by my Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith. Go ahead.
Ms. Nunley.
Yes.
What is it you're requesting us to do?
I would like an extension on the both personal property and real estate due date to June 24th with the interest accruing on August 1st, beginning to accrue on August 1st.
Okay. Why are they accruing interest on August 1st?
Normally it would start the first day of the month following the due date. That's only giving you five days to pay your taxes without interest.
Okay. So this, this is to normalize what we normally do.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve R 2022 dash 14, the extension date of June 24, or the due date of June 24th. The interest would accrue on a late situation, beginning August the 1st, 2022.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry, I need to fix your motion.
Yep.
We have it labeled as a resolution. It has to be an ordinance. So you, you need to amend that, although it's styled as a resolution, it's being adopted as an emergency ordinance. With the extend tax due dates, it's by ordinance.
Okay.
And so that resolution needs to be reclassified as an ordinance, an emergency adoption of that ordinance and we have to follow the procedure.
So I just, I'm just going to amend it as an ordinance.
Right.
As opposed to the resolution. It'll be amended as an.
Emergency ordinance.
Emergency ordinance.
Pursuant to emergency status. Yes.
Okay. Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do we get a second, Mr. Williams? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Williams, Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye. That brings us to our final public. Thank you, Ms. Nunley, Mr. Timberlake.
And just for the record, that needs to be advertised and you'll, you should see it again because after 60 days, which is before that August 1st date.
Right.
It would expire. So it's going to need to be advertised and put on another agenda. You can put it on consent. But it's going to, well, actually have a public hearing. See, but it's going to have to be advertised and put on another agenda since it was passed as an emergency ordinance because the 60 days will run before the August 1st date gets here.
Does it need a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, it, it should be just formality, but since August 1st is more than 60 days out, we need to.
We have plenty of time to do it by the June 27th meeting. You got that. Okay. We'll open up the final public comment period for the evening. If you'd like to come down and speak to the board. Three minutes as an individual, up to five minutes if you're representing a group.
Thank you.
Fran Carlton, 2219 Rawson Road. Thank you for the Park Enlightenment. It's, makes it easier for me to understand and for just regular Palatine people to know what's going on in the park. But I do want to clarify what happened here tonight. So the county will be collecting millions of dollars from the Palatine County taxpayers like me because of the current reassessment of the vehicle values. Now, the commissioner sent out an email in January warning the board about this tsunami that was coming. Yet tonight, the board ignored the proposal made by the commissioner of revenue, the treasurer and the financier, finance director. So you're going to give me $70 because I have two vehicles. While I'm going to have to pay several hundred dollars in taxes for those vehicles during this horrible time of inflation, gas prices and food prices. I, I don't get why you're going to wait a year and maybe give me a rebate, but come time the taxes are due, I'm going to have to cough up that money. Now, do you realize what you've done to the taxpayers of Palatine County? Do you really get it? I'm a senior citizen, fixed income, but guess what? There are some people out there who are going to have to make hard choices. Am I going to buy my kids those shoes they need? Am I going to be able to buy food? Because I'm going to have to pay these taxes because if I don't, guess what? The penalties accrue and it's just a catch 22. Did you really realize what you just did? I hope you, I hope you think about it. I hope you do come back and amend this budget. Because you think about people giving you phone calls? Yeah. People are going to call you, write you and come down here and talk to you about what you did tonight. And part of that, I'm going to say, was because it's still, it's still this board of personalities. You're still not working together for the good of the people of Palatine. It's still this board of personalities. And I'm sorry to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, I couldn't have said it any better than what that lady just said. It's despicable what you did tonight. It's despicable. I ju, I can't believe what you did tonight. All of.
David Anderson, 2366 Belcrest Circle, Palatine. Uh, first of all, I'd just like to thank Mr. Timberlake. When Mr. Cox put the example up on the board, it talked about, you know, he identified a problem on January 25th. He identified a solution which is even better than identifying the problem sometimes. He put it in writing and he sent it to the people that can make decisions. And as Mr. Cox said, and I'm glad he said it, he was honest, you know, you all ignored it. And I understand the budget can be muddy, it can be difficult. There's a lot of things thrown at you, but here's the expert, or one of the experts in the county, a trusted voice, a man who knows things, a man who's a problem solver, and he's coming to you and he's saying, hey, guys, this is what we need to do. And it fell on deaf ears. This is another example of a, what I consider a fairly significant situation where the county failed. And we've had a string of them. And after every one of them, I say, I hope y'all go back and, and look in the mirror collectively and say, what went right, what went wrong, and what are we going to do so it doesn't happen again? And this is another example where you need to ask yourself, why didn't nobody listen? And I think there's another question to be asked, and that is if these things keep happening, that's another question that needs to be asked by the board. Not just these one-off specific things and digging into them, which needs to be done, but why did they collectively keep happening? Something is not right. If you go back to Ramona's thing, that Mr. Cox showed, something is not right and it's time that we get it right. We can't keep waiting. And I look forward to you taking some action on it and thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman.
I see anyone else. We'll close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments.
County administrator comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I do. I appreciate the opportunity. So much has happened with this budget that it's easy to lose sight of what you have accomplished as a board with this budget. You doubled the tax rate to the elderly to help some of our senior citizens with the real estate bill. You eliminated the vehicle license fee, the $35 per vehicle or to 1.2 million dollars in amount equal to 2.8 cents on a real estate tax rate or 26 cents on a personal property tax rate. For the third straight year, the board has lowered the real estate tax rate. In a time where our school system helped, needed help to replace lost funding from the state, you provided an extra 2.1 million in additional funding for our schools. And you maintain a 10-year CIP without increasing the use of debt significantly. I just want you to know, as you look back on the fiscal year 23 budget preparation, please remember the great things you accomplished, accomplished. And we'll keep looking forward to ways we can keep improving and make it Palatine special. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board comments?
Did you say we gave a 5% raise to the employees?
Didn't add that, but thank you.